Amazing Marie, sounds like home. So that's, that's exactly what this energy is, Hryeth. I think I'm saying it right. Longing for home, homesick for the stars. So we are about to start an energy work session. Bottom of the deck is the blue flame. Spontaneous awakening, activation, yes, yes, yes. Sixth, seventh density energy, okay? No, we're just starting now. So outside of form, if you see here, it's just a light form. So, okay, beautiful, 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 beautiful. I am now going to have, we have uh your, your collective consciousness crystals um charging right now on a charging board for all of you. Um, yes, I absolutely send you and surround you in protection and healing guidance and clarity and wisdom of the highest divine vibration for the highest good of all. So what I am going to have you all do now, for those of you who want to connect with this energy field, it is a portal of energy rather than connecting directly with me. So, I am going to recommend now that you focus your breathing on your heart. Breathing in and out of the heart. Again, you don't have to be laying down or sitting in any way, but it is recommended. Also grab some water. You can move around if you need to. And for those of you who are, are visiting here and you are healers, transmuters, priests, priestesses, um, energy workers, channelers, or empaths, highly sensitive people, whatever it is you, you go by and you desire to help transmute for Gaia, for this collective, set your intention to do so now. The more that we stand together in group, collective-based healing, the more energy can be planted here. So focus on breathing in the heart. Now you do not have to be a, a visualizer. You can have sensitivities with feeling, knowing, touching, sensing during this process. Now, if you feel anything physically, mentally, emotionally, spiritually, allow yourself to breathe into that energy as this is an energy work session. So energy starts at the spiritual bodies and moves through the mental, uh, emotional, and then finally out of the physical. So any physical sensations you have are really good sign of release. Final release. So set your intention at this time to connect with this energy field, this energy work session. And I'd like for you to focus your intention on your root chakra. You're breathing on your root chakra. Deep breaths into your tailbone. Hold that energy there and then exhale out of the nose. Feel that energy expand out of the root chakra. Do this a few times. For those of you who are sensitive to colors and, and working with colors, visualizing red energy or feeling red energy around this area, calling it forth. While you are breathing. We are now implementing protection around all of the sacred directions. Calling upon the higher spheres of angelic protection to create a space that is untouchable by any energies that are impure. That may lack pure intent. As we move through different spaces within the astral today, specifically on my end, um, holding space and opening portals for energy work. And for those that are sacrificing their energy, but also implementing and giving their energy as well for this healing session and transmutation overall. I express deep gratitude, but also place immense amount of protection and healing energy around you at this time. For those of you who are tapped in, I would ask that you now visualize a cord of energy coming out of the root chakra. Each of your cords are unique to you, they look unique. Feel that energy ground and pillar down through the floor. Take your time with this process. Coming out of your tailbone, moving through your bed, moving through your chair, moving down through your car, pillaring down through the soil until it makes its way all the way down to the core of the earth. This metal plasmic sphere of intense heat, connect it to that core, to the heart of Gaia. Thank you so much for the butterflies. We're connecting with the beauty, the heart of Gaia, of Mother Earth. Earth pulsing that card, I wish I still had it out. Oh yes, here we go. Gaia loves you, Mother Earth loves you, we are reflections of Mother Earth. She is a living being, a living vessel. Connect to the heart. And when you feel your cord of energy connect to the heart of Gaia, I ask that you now intentionally breathe in and as you breathe in, feel that energy being pulled up your cord. Pulling gold energy if you can, if you can visualize. If not, feel this energy moving up this cord. All the way to your tailbone, feel that energy surrounding your space. Moving up your spine until it reaches your crown chakra and is filling your entire body. Feel yourself surrounded by the love, the beauty of Gaia, of mother, energy embraced. You are safe, you are loved, you are grounded here in your body. The inner sun feels warm, yes, yes, yes. Now for those of you who are able to visualize right now, I am going to ask that you focus your intention and, and set your intention on connecting with your inner tree of life. Your inner tree of life, everyone has a tree. We are going somewhere and we are utilizing your internal astral body to do so. Some of you are very sensitive with this already and some of you are developing this. It's okay, just allow yourself to be open to divine guidance and how the divine reflects this to you. So for those of you who have already journeyed and, and know about your inner tree of life, please make your way there. For those of you who this is very fresh and new, take some deep breaths into your heart space. Set your intention to connect with your inner tree of life with the divine, take your time. Some of you, it may be easier for you to feel yourself step outside of your body. Another you, your astral body, step outside of your body and move through a portal, a door, a gateway. For those of you who are doing this, make sure you place protection over your physical vessel here. Okay, place uh protective symbols or whatever, give yourself a kiss on the forehead. That's what I do all the time with myself. And then move through the portal of energy. For those of you who are able to just kind of snap your fingers and appear there or enter a very nature-based space and then look for a tree of energy. Um, allow whatever your process uh looks like, you know, to, to play itself out. But make your way to your inner tree. That's funny, one of my guided meditations turned on. I will be guiding you on a journey, okay. For those of you who need guidance, also you could visualize yourself moving into your heart center and feel yourself connected to a space of nature. This could look like a forest, the edge of a body of water. Whatever that looks like for you, look around and know that there's a tree there that is your tree of life. Don't try too hard, that's, that's the key with these things. Don't try, just allow your mind to guide you. In this astral space, it already knows there's a tree there. Your tree might shift, it might be a willow one time, it might be a pine tree the other time. It might be kind of shape-shifty, but your tree has a name. For those of you that this is, is fresh for you, your tree has a name. This name could sound like symbols, the wind, it could be an actual name. But I want you to hug your tree in this space. And if it's difficult for you to visualize, just hug yourself. Take a moment, hug yourself, know that you are hugging your tree of life. Your tree of life is connected to your spine and your rib cage here. There is also an astral space that you can connect with that is very safe. We are going to be starting our energy work from this space. Root chakra. Some of you are guided to go inside of your tree, to enter your tree and rest in a space while we do this uh energy work session. Others of you are guided to just relax somewhere next to your tree. And allow the energy work to take place. There could even be a blanket out that you lay down and lay next to your tree or inside of your tree. Take your time in getting into this space and into this process as we are now going to be opening a portal space of energy for you to directly connect with in order to receive this energy work session, starting with the root chakra, working with the power and wisdom of obsidian. A root chakra, holding the wisdom of our identity, our stability, our connection with our grounded material reality here, the physical, our bodies. We are wanting to open this space, balance this space, cleanse and clear this space as well. Hello Bobby, we're connecting with our inner tree, our inner tree of life and starting with the root chakra. As a collective energy work session, so set your intention now. If you're just joining, that's okay. If you've been here for a while, set your intention to connect with the divine of the highest vibration for the highest good of all and receive energetic, healing, clearing uh messages, clarity, wisdom, activation, upgrades. Anything that can assist you in your journey of healing and connecting with the wisdom of the root chakra at this time, the color red, as well as uh the wisdom and energy of Saturn. We're gonna be spending a few moments here at the root chakra. It may help to focus your breathing on this area as well, your tailbone. But just relax as I'm gonna be opening this portal space. I see a lot of your energy fields and it's beautiful because I see a lot of sunshine or warmth. Set your intention to connect with this portal energy. You can even visualize it if it helps you and feel a string of energy connecting directly with your root chakra and filling it up with light healing. What needs to be released? Think of the relationship with your father or your father's lineage. Your relationship with your identity. Your relationship with finances, with exchange, with this physical reality. What needs releasing? Do you struggle with constipation? Do you struggle with diarrhea? Do you have to pee all the time? Do you not pee enough? A root chakra is how we output energy. I do recommend for the collective now at this time to focus their breathing on the root chakra, on your tailbone. As you breathe in. Breathe into the tailbone. It's my favorite part. And as you exhale, exhale out of the nose and feel that energy climb up out of the heart space, connecting the root and the heart chakra. This happened last time. We are going to be moving to the sacral chakra soon. But I want you all to focus your attention on this obsidian. And as you're focusing your attention on the obsidian, I'd like for you to connect with your inner heart wisdom. Ponder the elements and aspects of your physical reality that you would naturally like to shift or align more deeply with unconditional love. What is holding you back from that space? And I want you to place your intention, all that you'd like to release on this obsidian here. Imagine this energy sucking out like a vacuum. All of your concerns, all of your worries, all of your fears. You deserve peace. We're sealing the root chakra. Eighty-eight. Fifty-five. We're moving, we're traveling up, a lot of rear, real. I just read your uh real release, beautiful. Can't stop sneezing and blowing my nose. Sounds like your upper, your third eye is cleansing and clearing. A lot of rear uh root chakra along the spine, I felt that really deeply. Moving up to our sacral, our navel, our belly button area. Now, root chakra is connected to our crown. Sacral chakra is connected to our third eye, but also made of the same tissue as our throat. So both these areas connect directly with our womb space. This is our space of creation, of wisdom, of birth, of our divine mother energy. Regardless of gender, this is a very feminine receptive vessel or, or energy center. And this space is super important to cultivate energy healing with as well as spend time on as we have a lot of our sexual traumas stored here, which is extremely, uh way more common than I'd like for it to be. Uh wounds around our inner feminine, our inner mother energy, as well as our mother's lineage, our womb. Uh many people deal with uh chronic issues, dealing with hormonal imbalance. That's that sacral throat connection, thyroid glands, um. So, very, very important. I feel really called to dedicate some beautiful time on this space. So some of you who are resting um and relaxing next to your tree or with your tree, go back to that space if you've kind of veered a little off. And I'd like for you to connect with the element of water, however that appears in that astral space for those of you who are connected. Allow water to take form near you, whether that's a storm that comes in, a lake that all of a sudden appears next to you. But take your time in allowing this body or energy of water to come near you as we move into the wisdom of the sacral as well as the moon. So visualize the moon, work with the moon. We're gonna move into the sacral. Beautiful, beautiful, beautiful. And I think with this one, I'm gonna add the sound of water waves in this sound transmission. We're working with red jasper. Where have you been neglecting yourself? Where have you been neglecting your needs? Your, your pleasure center? Have you been overindulging in pleasure, underindulging in pleasure? Mentally, emotionally, physically, this is our emotional body. Are there emotions stored here that are hard to connect with? This is our subconscious energy. Oftentimes what fuels our dreams, that's that lunar astral energy. And we want to uh birth our astral astral. This is, for those of you who are visualizing right now and connecting with another sphere, you're in your astral body, not your lunar astral. So connect with the energy and wisdom of the orange ray as I open the space to send energy healing to the collective sacral chakra, your womb. Connecting with the divine. And only allowing those with pure intent into this space. What in the world? Saturn is coming through very strong right now for a lot of you. Saturn is, Saturn's presence is very strong right now for a lot of you right now. We're gonna be connecting with uh Saturn energy in just a moment here. My butterflies, hello Nay. We're connecting to the sacral chakra right now, the wisdom of our womb, our collective womb. Regardless of gender. Shakina stardust, hello, hello. You have such beautiful work. I really resonate with a lot of your, your readings. Our womb space. For those of you who are visualizers, feel the energy of spirals coming out of your womb space to connect with the cosmic womb. All of our womb spaces connected to the cosmic womb. I'd like for you to feel water washing over you, washing over your body, your emotions, cleansing and clearing you. I'm not taking a break in any way. I'd like for you to focus your intention and your breathing on your, your navel area, your belly button. I've got something really interesting to explain to all of you. There are many of you, this is what multidimensionality is. I'm here right now in this physical body. But I'm also next to my tree and receiving energy. And I'm also standing and resting above a portal energy with other cosmic beings shooting energy healing down through that portal of energy that you all are connecting with. A lot of you are here with me. You're also in this other layer of being, whether you're able to visualize it, see it, or you're not. You're still there. If you've set your intention to be there, you are still there. It's just you may not be fully conscious of that, that element. And a lot of you are also in that group of energy, of beings, over souls that are shooting energy healing through that portal. So when these, we are healers of ourselves, yes, 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 absolutely. We're receiving a lot of cosmic energy, cosmic healing. A lot of you are, are up there with me. Shooting from a higher body, um, a light body. These uh energy codes. So open the space to receive that energy. Allow yourself to be blessed with the wisdom of love. The energy of wings, I see a lot around wings in the sacral chakra. A lot of wisdom around winged beings, birds, butterflies, bees, dragons. Guides that fly. Beautiful. We're gonna be moving on to the solar plexus here in just a moment. This one sounds good, I like this one, my sacral chakra. Alright, now we are gonna move into the wisdom of fire, the element of fire. So if, if you are able to visualize, I recommend connecting with the wisdom of the sun or Mars energy. Very masculine, the solar plexus, our tummy is very masculine, our center of power, of control. Yellow energy, fire, liberation, power, a lot of A lot of you have your dragons resting in this space, a lot of your cosmic connections. When this space is healed, a lot of wounds around power, self-esteem, self-worth. It's gonna be opening portals and doorways for you. Solar consciousness, Damon, you came right on time. Very, very, very beautiful. So we're doing an energy work session. And we're gonna connect with golden ray energy. Oh, that's so beautiful Nay. We're gonna connect with golden ray energy. Now, if you are, it is recommended to connect back with your tree energy if you veered off, if you're in water from the sacral, absolutely beautiful. Now move on to the wisdom in that astral space of fire. Visualize fire, the sun. And you're immune to this fire. And sometimes I actually will visualize fire initiations of fire burning my flesh in the, in higher states of being, so that I can be reborn. But we are in direct alignment with the phoenix constellation. I'm pretty sure it's a constellation, but either way, it's a phoenix gate right now, March 3rd through the 7th. A lot of you are transforming. Connect with the wisdom and energy of the phoenix. And some of you may, I would recommend, call on that guide, winged beings, I just say. So the energy of the phoenix to come through with any messages, clarity, guidance for this collective right now. Call upon that energy to be grounded and rooted in this space, that template, so that this collective can absorb that template if they so desire. Set your intentions now to connect with the portal sphere of solar plexus, energy healing, energy work, cosmic energy work. But also set your intention to connect with the wisdom of the phoenix. And I'm going to take a moment, we have copper here. It reminds me of the core. If it was much larger, the core of the earth, the core of the sun, very heavy, dense metal, powerful copper. Attraction. So we're really attracting powerful healing to the solar plexus. I'd like for you to focus your breathing on your solar plexus chakra. Omari, you can finish this, I'm gonna be posting this on YouTube. Focus your breathing on your solar plexus. Allow yourself to be surrounded by the wisdom of fire and the wisdom of relinquishing control, of surrender, of direction, of motivation, of powerful healing masculine energy. I'd like for you to open the space. As I'm seeing this as very present right now in the collective, open the space and ask if the totem, the frequency, the energy of the phoenix has anything to show you, to tell you, to communicate with you. And when I say open the space, that means ask, set your intention, and then relinquish control and allow it to come to you. Trust your inner voice. So beautiful. Now we're gonna be moving into the heart space. Okay. And what I'm gonna do is, as we're veering and moving into the heart space, focus your breathing on your solar plexus. As you inhale, breathe into the solar plexus. As you exhale, exhale up and into the heart space. Very, very, very beautiful, very smooth. Let me see here. Alright. We're gonna be playing my Divine Union transmission for the heart space. I think it's the perfect one, our space of alchemy, our center of love, unconditional, receiving and giving. And, oh my goodness. It's one of my favorite transmissions so far, my most recent tune to the frequency vibration and energy of Mars and Venus. Very, very powerful. So we're gonna connect to the energetic field of the heart space, working with a type of serpentine called heli right, and this tiny little unikite here. An unikite is one that cuts cords, it releases a lot. And I'd like for us to focus on that wisdom here in our heart space. First, what it is we'd like to release, okay? So focus on wounds around love, grief, heartache, loss, lack mentality. Receiving, giving, how is that dynamic? Do you give too much? Do you receive too much? Are you not receiving enough? Think about these elements, unconditional love. Focus your breathing on your heart space. And we're going to get ready to now travel into the cosmos for those of you who are meditating and journeying at this time in the astral. So focus your attention on your tree, this is the element of air by the way. So wind. You may wanna visualize a tornado, a vortex of energy surrounding your field, cleansing and clearing your energy. Or wind blowing through your hair, the wisdom of wind. What does the wind have to whisper to you? Focus on the heart. This is fourth dimensional, mental body energy as well. How has your mental body been? Speaking of Christ, speaking of Yahshua, I do open the space at this time to connect directly to the field of Christ, Buddhaic, monatic consciousness. The consciousness of unconditional love, of unconditional grace, of mastery, of unconditional forgiveness, of non-judgment. What is it that you need to release? I want you to focus on this tiny little ball here. Is there any past situations, experiences, disappointment, rejection, wounds? Wounds around codependency, addiction, past heartbreak, grief, that you are needing to release? Now is the time to do so. Look at this stone and feel the energy like a vortex, removing that from your system. I apologize for my fingers. I love you so much. If you are able to say this with me mentally or out loud, "I love you, I love you, I love you", put it in the comments, "I love you, I love you so much. I love you, I appreciate you, I see you, I value you. I love you." This is unikite. It is very potent, very powerful. "I love you, I love you, I love you." When was the last time someone said, "I love you"? "I love you so much, I love you for you. I love all of your flaws, all of your perfection. I love your inner Christ." We are saying, "I love you" to each other, to ourselves, "I love you." Hold your heart, "I love you." Feel it, "I love you, I love you, I love you, I love you, I love you." Very simple, "I love you." You deserve healing, you deserve to receive. You deserve to experience the wisdom of forgiveness for self and others. You deserve to experience the union of Shiva and Shakti externally and internally. You are so beautiful. You are so handsome. You are so amazing. I love you so very much. I love you, thank you, I'm sorry, forgive me. Beautiful, yes. Beautiful. I was working on a sound transmission actually, using that. Utilizing that energy, it's powerful. "I love you, Eureka, I love you so much. You are so valued, you are so needed." It's so tough. It's tough because it's so easy to love, in a sense. Cause I feel here, in higher spaces, and as we continue up higher, what we're doing is we're expelling love. You're aware of your third dimensional body here. Well, what's actually happening up there is this fire of energy. Some of you can feel it, some of you can see it, surrounding the collective, surrounding Gaia. I want you to send this energy, this bubble of love. I want you to send it, one first, around all the layers of yourself. You are loved, you are protected, you are safe, you are accepted, for all that you are. All of your flaws, all your insecurities, all the things that you may perceive as ugly or not worth it. All the damage that may have been done to you or that you may have done to others. You are forgiven unconditionally. You are accepted by the divine. Breathe this energy into your heart space. And as you exhale, exhale out of the mouth three times and feel the energy release. Anything that does not serve you. Any thoughts of lack, any thoughts of codependency, "I need this, I need that". Any thoughts of needing outside of self, externally. We have everything we need within. Any grief, any attacks that were done on your heart space. Allow that energy to dissipate, to remove itself. What is that? Control, out, delete, bye, see you later. Embrace the love that is there for you unconditionally. And I want you with this bubble, after you're done doing your release, feel that energy expand until it is surrounding Gaia. Send it to Mother Earth, send it to the world. We love Gaia, we love Mother Earth. And we are now going to, in a moment, step into the second portion of this energy work session. If you're mentioning, I have my skin tag. And I have a pimple right here too. It's a pain in the butt. I actually had someone, a professional ophthalmologist, message me on TikTok the other day and say, "Hey, I'm a professional ophthalmologist. If you wanna message me on Instagram a picture of the cyst on your eye." I was like, wow. Like a random person, I don't even know you. I appreciate it though, if he was genuinely wanting to help. No, you're okay. Alright. And I also have like gold, I have a little bit of makeup on it, so it's making it stand out a little more. Moving on to the second portion. We are going to be moving into the cosmic energy, which the cosmic energy grid, in my opinion, is a little bit more potent. So we're just cleansing and clearing, drink some water please, water break. It is, it's my left eye too. And the reason why it looks, it used to be very small. Just like two black dots, two brown dots that stuck out. It was really, really pretty. And then, trigger warning, I had an attempt on my, I attempted to take my life. Ever since then, it's been, it's much bigger. So sometimes it flattens a bit and sometimes it's a bit more swollen, but it doesn't cause me any issues and it doesn't hurt. But it is filled with fluid a little bit, so I guess it is kind of a cyst. It's not bothering me, it's not something I'd like to remove either. I feel like it's a part of my story. So. Cleansing, clearing the space. Welcome, for those of you who are just joining, we are moving into the second half of our energy work healing session, specifically connecting with the cosmic grid through the wisdom of Saturn. Saturn is coming through really heavily. And it's kind of exciting. "I am one, I am one." You can listen to this Divine Union transmission on my YouTube channel, the link is in my bio. You can also support my music, my sound transmissions on my website directly by purchasing these sessions, so that you can have them permanently and you can listen to the raw audio, which I think is the most potent. And as we move on to the second portion of the energy healing, our Kundalini transmission comes on. Powerful, and I just said we're about to move into a more potent field, okay. Powerful, and I just said we're about to move into a more potent field, okay. For those of you who are just joining, and for those of you who, hold on, let me slow down a bit, check in with myself, I need some water. Okay. We're gonna be focused directly on receiving any messages, clearing, cleansing, upgrades, activations, healing, purging, clearing, but I think a lot of you are gonna, and maybe before this as well, received a lot of insights and clarity, or messages, symbols, things like that, keep an eye on those things, write them down. These are important, we just connected with the energy of the Phoenix before this, we're gonna be connecting with some other fields, unique cosmic fields of energy, so it might move through this a little bit more quickly, but just follow my field of energy and allow your innermost being to direct your flow, so for those of you who are just connecting, and also for those of you who have been here, focus your breathing on your root chakra, set your intention to connect with this field of energy, these portals. And for those of you who already connect with your inner tree of life, connect with your tree of life right now, set your intention to go to your tree, rest near that space, either travel outside of your body, move through a portal into a field of nature, and know in that field of nature, you have a tree there that is your tree of life, this is a safe astral space. And once you make it to that space, that tree, or the wisdom of the tree, however it appears to you, I'd like for you to enter into that tree. And when you enter into that tree, set your intention to visit the field of Saturn. This is so interesting, because Saturn is a potent, potent field, very intense, very, very intense, so, not one that I would naturally want to visit. But we're gonna go visit Saturn, Saturn's rings, okay? Or Saturn itself. However it appears to you, some of you could be going to visit Cronos, which is an actual, you know, being, or Satan, the adversary, time, you could be visiting the field of time. But honor your tree, and allow yourself to open a space within, to set your intention to connect with the field of Saturn and do so. Some of you may see yourself shoot out of your tree, travel like a rocket ship, up, out, into Saturn, and some of you may just appear there. Now, you are able to visualize these things while still remaining lucid in this physical vessel, that's what I'm doing right now with you all. So feel free to share your experiences in the comments. But we are moving into the wisdom of Saturn. The symbol for Saturn looks like this, kind of, if you want to visualize it. Okay? Saturn is moving tomorrow, some would say, in the Western astrology, into Pisces, and Saturn in Eastern or Vedic astrology would be already in Aquarius this past January, so... Moving to Saturn. Okay, the wisdom of Saturn, and I'm going to be creating a portal sphere of energy in the astral space, cosmic space, for you to connect with directly. Set your intention to connect with that healing space as we move through the second initiation of the heart. Allow Saturn to show you any messages, reveal to you any signs, clarity, as well as healing, clearing, activations, purging, that needs to take place at this time, in your heart space. I sense that some of you are extremely grounded right now, and some of you are kind of floating in this cosmic field of energy. Just allow yourself to flow with whatever is coming through. We are all protected in this space, in this field of energy, surrounded by angels, surrounded by the divine of the highest vibration. Anyone with impure intent, or any impurities of any kind are not allowed in this space whatsoever, past, present, future. Yes, this will be going on YouTube. The wisdom of Saturn, we are connecting with the wisdom of Saturn, the Father, he's kind of like a strict, strict uncle, very strict, restrictions, delays, boundaries, but wisdom. Wisdom in adversity. Lots of breathing, make sure to breathe, deep breaths in and out. Yeah, this is the most potent transmission I've ever done. I'm holding a lot of space right now, because I think everyone is kind of experiencing their own wisdom from Saturn, so just allow it to come to you in whatever ways it needs to. Oh, chant with me, I love this part. You can chant mentally, or out loud. That's beautiful, magical, mama. Focus your breathing on your heart, deep breaths in and out. I'm being guided to ask that some of you place your hands in prayer position at heart level. There is something important for you to receive through your crown, that will hit at your heart, and move through the conduit or channel of your arms. We have flow, and then phew, out of the arms, place them together like this. Alright, beautiful, beautiful. We're gonna start our journey and process up into the throat chakra. But it is important, Saturn has a hexagon at its north and south poles. It's a hexagon shape, six, very interesting, ugh, gives me the chills. I would like for you to focus your intention on the wisdom, the beauty of Saturn, Saturn's rings, the hexagon at the top. And for those of you who are able to visualize, we're going, we're on a shamanic healing session, that's kind of what this is, an energy work session. I'd like for you to take your body and move it, or set your intention to move it through the core, the center, that hexagon energy at the north pole, going all the way down, Saturn is gaseous, till you reach the center. And almost like a slingshot, I want you to imagine yourself going all the way down into the center, and then being shot up and out into the cosmos. Each of you will go somewhere different, it's okay if visualization is not it for you, allow yourself to just set your intention to do so, and feel that energy, that connection. As you do have a body that is capable of doing this, there just may not be a connecting point at this time. We're moving into fifth density and higher. Why? Because at the beginning, we have the blue flame, okay, so as we move into throat, third eye crown, we're moving into fifth, sixth, and seventh dimensional fields of energy, outside of this system. Alright, so set your intention to do so, just relax if you feel called, some of you may just feel called to close your eyes and relax for these last three. That's okay, I love you so much, do what you feel called to do. These are really intense fields of energy, Saturn just really blessed, that was a blessing, for those of you who were connected with that, and for those of you who didn't, or just missed it, this will be posted on YouTube. Okay, beautiful, yes, 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 travel through that hexagon above the entrance, beautiful, beautiful, keep journeying through that space, that sounds like you're moving through the wisdom, a temple of Saturn, alright, so, it might look different for each of you, some of you will see a planet, some of you will see something else, just allow yourself to flow, bluish gray tune, beautiful, the throat chakra is blue, so we're moving into the wisdom of the blue ray. Some of you may feel called to call upon Archangel Michael energy frequency, as well as blue ray, Moses, Almoria energy, massaging the throat as well, not too hard, but just rubbing this face, this is your output of creation. We all have a very blessed throat center, and it is important that we operate from a space of speaking and expressing our truth. You are loved, you deserve to express, many times we've been silenced here. We have wounds around being silenced, which may make us overtalk, talk loudly, talk too quiet, not want to speak up. And this is often tied to our solar plexus around control, overindulgence, underindulgence. So just allow yourself to open the space to receive healing, clearing, messages, clarity, anything around the throat space, purification. And we're connecting with Orca Agit, I love this, my sea creatures, and guess what's next? I think, I'm pretty sure my Call of the Ocean transmission, everything is just so aligned. So yeah, well, we're gonna do Call of the Ocean transmission, and then I think we're gonna close out with my third eye transmission. And maybe potentially move into, yeah, so, once we move above the heart chakra, we start stepping into, I think the throat chakra rules over time. And then we move into space, and we start moving outside of, or ether, sorry, ether, then I think time and space. You can check out my website for more information on the energy centers. I actually, all of a sudden, have to pee, so allow yourself to focus your breathing, send me to the Eagle Nebula, beautiful, beautiful, beautiful. Allow Saturn energy to shoot you out into the cosmos somewhere, I have to pee. Allow yourself to explore, the space is open, the portal is not closed in any way. Focus your breathing on your throat space. And yes, if you feel like moving around your body, please do so, yes. This is my Call of the Ocean transmission, all of my transmissions are on YouTube or Apple Music, Spotify, you can click the link in my bio. Yes, nature calls. Alright, beautiful, 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 beautiful. Alright, moving on to our throat. Let me just ground myself really quick back into the sphere. I love this one, my Call of the Ocean. Magical mama, I so deeply appreciate you and your very kind, kind words, that means a lot. Alright, moving into the throat chakra. Pay attention to where you are in the cosmos. If you are new here, just allow yourself to journey out into the cosmos. Focus your breathing on your throat chakra, your center of expression, blue energy. There is wisdom for you here around spirit, divine messages, clarity, there is clearing, healing, alchemizing, transmutation for you, in this space. So set your intention to connect with the portal sphere of energy that offers up that energy of healing infinitely, your relationship to spirit, the divine, abundant. And a lot of you will be receiving messages for this last portion, so I'm just gonna be kind of sitting towards the back and opening the space to receive messages for the collective as well. I can't personally, deep breaths into the throat chakra, into the space of speaking. I feel like a lot of you are veering away from the energy work session, which is okay. There's a lot to receive at this time. I think it, for some of you, is a little bit overwhelming or just a little bit intense. I just feel a lot being revealed in, in this session, but outside of the session as well over the next period of time. And it's funny because Purple Cat, I cannot wait for everyone or many, many individuals. And I think this is what is growing, to find out that Christ very largely was connected and associated with priest and priestess paths connected to cosmic journeys such as this and cosmic healing, especially that energy which is directed by divine source, a boom creator energy. So very, very, very beautiful. Not understanding what I'm referring to, can you clarify, Damon? I love you, Purple Cat. What we're doing is both, or that's at least the goal, creator and creation. When we acknowledge each other, we merge into one. When we acknowledge creator and we don't acknowledge creation, we are polarized towards father and away from mother. When we connect with just creation and no longer creator, we are polarized more towards mother and no longer father. And it's interesting because most of the time what I find in this society is too much polarity around father and not enough around mother. And it's very important to polarize and connect with both for our own well-being, for our own sake. And that's exactly what Yeshua Christ spoke of and taught as one of the most masterful magicians and alchemists in the entire world, in my opinion, as well as Buddha, as well as the history and wisdom of Krishna and what we see in the beautiful union of Shiva and Shakti. So I apologize for veering off a little bit, but I very much value the expression of internal truth and wisdom. So that is the only reason why I am sharing what I'm sharing right now and taking the time out to do that. All I feel at the moment is peace and love, successful transmission here, Christ. I just, yes, 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 yes. So, okay, things are about to get really intense. Water break, okay? Water break. Purple Cat, it is also so much love to you, but it's kind of wrong to make the assumption about people's belief systems in this session here, in this group. It's better to, one, ask somebody individually what they, what they believe in or are polarized towards, but to assume that individuals are either atheist or spiritual in this community. I work with a lot of Christians. I myself resonate very deeply with Western religious beliefs and systems. My name is Shekana Healing, which is Hebrew in origin. So very deep connections. You are welcome to join this space and bear witness to the rest of this healing energy work session. But I am opening the space yet again for anyone who has just joined or who is already joining to reconnect to the direct portal source of energy, directly connected to source, energy of the highest vibration, oriented towards the highest good of all. And only those of pure intent and energy of pure intent can connect with that field of energy. We are protected and safe in this space. We are connected to the cosmos. If you have grounded in your physical body in the last couple of minutes, that is absolutely fine. Take a moment to feel your body wiggle your fingers and your toes as we step into this next end sphere of third eye crown, clearing, healing, purging, as well as any messages to receive. Now this is stepping into sixth, seventh density or dimensional field where we are then outside of form. So it may be best or most comfortable for you to relax and just not focus on anything. Yes. Oh, that's beautiful. I, I hope that it went well, Queen Sagittarius. Yeah, Shekana, very strong connection with Mary Magdalene, yes, yes, yes. Shekana or Shekaina is, has its roots in Hebrew traditions, but it's just another word for mother or the divine mother energy, the divine feminine. You could utilize Shakti, you could utilize Lakshmi, Ashura, Anana, Tiamat, Maat, Isis. It's very beautiful. So yes, we are all sending love, we're all wrapping each other in love. If you could, blow up the chat with "I love you" for me. "I love you, I love you, I love you, I love you so much, I love you, I love you." And we are going to then focus our intention on our third eye, our brow, yes. "I love you, I love you, congratulations on astral projection, be safe, please be safe, I love you, I love you, I love you." I realized, I'm kind of making the L. "I love you, I love you, I love you, I love you." "I love you unconditionally in every way for all of your perceived flaws." I need my remote so loud. Your perceived flaws, your perceived imperfections, your insecurities, "I love you, I love you." You are everything, you are nothing, you are the divine in this physical vessel here. You are an emanation, a unique emanation of the divine. Each one of you, every single one of you, everyone on this planet right now. Whether we want to look at polarity or not, we need to step outside of looking at polarity and look at it all as oneness. Not love and light, but oneness. We are one, we are all one. Outside of this matrix of energy, matrix being mother, matter, mutter, we are one. This is beautiful. You are beautiful, you are respected, you are loved, you are appreciated. Moving into third eye wisdom, focusing on the brow, you are grounded here. I would like for you to then focus, if you're able to visualize or feel yourself, set the intention in your heart to connect with this energy field of protection, but also this portal field of energy work centered around connecting you directly with sixth and seventh density or dimensional consciousness, any messages, any wisdom, clarity, guidance for you at this time for the months and years ahead. Any, any messages more specifically around your blueprint, your purpose here, strictly oriented around the internal bodies, strictly oriented around surrounding you with comfort, joy, and peace. We connect with these layers of our internal beings as well. Any guides, any angels, any consciousness or mark of divine father, mother, energy that will assist us in our process of healing, returning back home to self, as well as physical, mental, emotional, spiritual, astral, karmic, causal, celestial, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, healing, grounding, rooting, and activation upgrades. Each of you, it'll look different. So we are connecting with Lapis Lazuli. Beautiful wisdom, I love this. I felt really called, so ancient Egyptian connections, wisdom connected to the initiations of Saturn as well, the root chakra, which is the base root of the journey home. "I love you, I love you, I love you." We're listening to the third eye transmission, which is fairly potent. So just allow yourself to kind of zoom out. Connect with the cosmos, allow your divine energy to lead you in the heart up to the third eye. I love my selenite sticks. I love mugwort, I drink mugwort tea all the time. Third eye. Set your intention to connect. Thank you, Casper. I hope you all feel loved, protected, safe, accepted, embraced. Some of you may be guided to place your left hand on your third eye, your brow, and right hand on the heart. Transmission is beginning. Says breakfast wine. Eleven eleven. Seeing a lot of you accessing the cosmos around this space, rings of cosmic energy surrounding your third eyes, very, very beautiful. Absorb the energy, absorb the frequencies, absorb the calmness, the nothingness that some of you feel, the restful space. Third eye is feminine, it is our, an aspect of our internal feminine mother energy. It is our ability to receive insight, intuition, sixth sense, to see the divine, to discern, to trust our intuition. If we do not trust ourselves in our root sacral chakra, then this is gonna be overactive or it's gonna be closed. So very, very, very important that we trust the wisdom. If there's pressure going on here, just allow it to breathe, breathe into that space. Focus on your heart if you need to. This is not very active in the collective, the third eye crown. So just embrace whatever energy, healing, activations, messages, clarity are coming in for you. I love you so much. Oh, I feel that in my heart, my rear heart. Thank you so much for the roses. I appreciate any donations. I have my donation tips, information in the link in my bio. Any support, my way for any energy healing or just love that you're wanting to give is so deeply appreciated. We're going to head into the crown chakra in just a moment, but it's very interesting. Because as I was closing out of like third eye energy, I felt called to play a song that I have not released whatsoever. And so I'm just trying to do that really quickly. So focus your breathing on your heart, because I do feel a lot of tension in the collective's heart space. It's kind of making me feel a little bit intent. Let's see. Very excited. This is actually one of my crown of shooting tourist circles of white gold light up and into all. Casper, that sounds like cosmic bliss. Look up Dan Winters. Cosmic bliss is the root of all creation, golden ratio, Fibonacci spirals, and also Taurus fields of energy. Cosmic Bliss is the root of all creation, golden ratio, Fibonacci spirals, and also Taurus fields of energy, the physics of interdimensional travel, as well as connecting interdimensionally, multidimensionally. Very, very powerful, very powerful energy. Let's see. Yeah, so this, not this track that's playing right now, this is Tears of Mount Sinai in the back. This was released last August. This one is my Christ Transmission. Please stick around. It's about five minutes in length. I kind of have a feeling why I feel called to play this. This one came to me in one of my lowest moments, and I remember all I had was my microphone. And it was extremely, extremely low. And I remember having an epiphany because I made this beat and I said, "Okay, what am I going to do with this?" And it said, "You're going to do a Trinity of Harmonies," so three harmonies on top of each other, and it's a transmission. But this transmission is coming directly from Christic energy. When I tell you, I still have a lot of editing to do on the track itself, but it was purely channeled, purely just one playthrough, recorded, and then I did the harmonies, which is one of the most difficult harmonic sound things that I've done. You can find my music on Apple Music, Spotify. I have two albums out right now. Released, my most recent one, November of last year, Whispers of My Heart. That was just kind of an amalgamation of a journey that I wanted to share with you all, healing. And then I have a few singles on there, but YouTube lately has been where I only put out my transmissions because, and my website. Those ones require energetic exchange because they are very potent and they are portals of energy that I think I only charge like five, four to five dollars for you to permanently purchase a transmission. You get emailed the transmission and then you listen with headphones. No, this is Tears of Mount Sinai. I'm not playing it yet. When we play it, before I play this next one, I'm going to have us all focus on the Crown and then I'm going to log off. You can click the link in my bio. I have everything. I have my YouTube, my Instagram. You can connect with, if you click on my profile, there's a link there. All my service information is there. I have my Divine Workshops, my group healing sessions, which are a bit more potent than this. Oh my gosh. Here it is. Okay, yes, so all my workshops, all of my information, my stuff is on my website. And yes, that's what we're heading towards this year. End of the year, I'm also planning on doing two workshops, I mean, two retreats. I do have an element on my website where you can apply to work with me one-on-one, whether it's a one-time reading that you're looking for. I only do Akashic Blueprint-based readings. I do not do physical reality-based readings. Kind of an amalgamation of the details of your blueprint, your life journey, and whatever wants to come through. And the wait time for that could be four to eight weeks, and it might not even happen. So, I just kind of give that warning out. But okay, yes, we're going to focus on the Crown Chakra and we are going to listen to this Christ Transmission. This is going to be in my Phoenix Experience album that's coming out. I don't know when. It might have to wait because I have a vision for this album and I don't want to settle. So this is completely, pretty much unedited. You might have heard a clip of it before, but just allow yourself to receive the frequencies and the love, the vibrations. Crown Chakra being Seventh Density outside of form. This is mastery as well, which makes me think of Christ, the wisdom of Christ, the wisdom of mastery, of Mary Magdalene, Isis, Osiris, Horus energy. So we're connecting with cosmic fields. Focus on your Crown Chakra and just allow yourself to relax. So it's about Christ finding you. "I found you waiting for me." Focus your energy, your intention on your Crown Chakra. This is about coming home to the highest layers of self. Thank you, Bhagwinder. The Trinity of Harmonies was really hard. Breathe into your Crown Chakra. I cried making this one. Yes, it's not fully mixed and mastered yet. Yeah, it was... Where's my remote? It's funny you say Beach House because Beach House is my favorite. One of my favorite groups. I love Beach House. But, so I make all my beats. And then what I'll do when I'm making my beats, sometimes on GarageBand, sometimes on my phone, my keyboard, I'll be like, "Hold on. What am I going to do?" So then I always described it as speaking in baby language. Now, as I'm talking, focus your breathing on your heart chakra. Allow yourself to kind of flow in the space, but this one, I remember writing down Christ Transmission. And I thought I was going to be making a whole album that was a channel of Christ consciousness, Christ energy. But I don't know, that might be sometime in the future, but this felt like a completely different...